And the pledge by Ms. Heidig.
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the good health and well-being this board has experienced so far this year, and pray that you continue to watch over us as we continue serving our community. We ask that you grant our citizens peace, prosperity, and well-being in their lives, and especially bless the Skinner family in their mourning of the loss of Mr. Skinner's brother. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate this time. I do want to say what I'd like to do at this time is acknowledge our police department.
Oh, yes.
Sheriff Harris and his deputies and his school resource officers, you prevented something that has been happening throughout the United States this year with children that have intentions to hurt other people or to destroy property. And the fact that we, Spotsylvania County, did not have that happen goes to the credit of your department, your detectives, your people, yourself as a leader and everything. And I just want to say on behalf of, for me, and I hope the other board members will feel the same way, that thank you for a job well done preventing a tragedy that we do not want to happen in Spotsylvania, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner.
And Sheriff, by the way, I learned about it in Arizona, so this is a national thing.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for your kind remarks, Mr. Skinner. There is a couple people I want to recognize in this case, one being the student at Riverbend that had the nerve and the courage to come forward and tell School Resource Officer Larry DeBella about this incident and what they had found out. That's what started this investigation. This student working with the school staff, Dr. Baker's people, the faculty at Riverbend and the Sheriff's Department, in my opinion, is a true hero, and that's who deserves the credit. But thank you for your kind remarks.
Thank you, sir.
We're moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Beyond the approval of minutes, which are items two and three on your consent agenda, we have also this evening for your action item four, approval of a contract to High Sierra Pools Incorporated to provide L'Oreal Park Pool repairs. This is pursuant to an IFB that was issued through our procurement division on July 16, 2015, soliciting bids for L'Oreal Park Pool repairs and resurfacing. Six bids were received, ranging from $200,000 to this low bid of $151,155. Item five is acceptance of a 2015 federal grant award for partial payment of the jail's cost to incarcerate criminal aliens. Federal program payments are provided to states and localities that incur correctional officer salary costs for incarcerating undocumented criminal aliens that are convicted of certain crimes. The amount awarded for the federal fiscal year 2015 is $6,217. There is no local match requirement for this grant award and no ongoing requirement to fund this award if it is discontinued. These funds will be passed on to the Rappahannock Regional Jail to offset their salary costs as directed in this program. Item six is a business property refund for South Point Mickey D's LLC. That's not my slang, that's their corporate name. South Point Mickey D's failed to follow, failed to file its business tangible property tax return for tax years 2013 and 2014. Statutory assessments were done for those years with penalties. And by the business amending both tax years returned, they are due a refund of $35,657.28. Commission of Revenue recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this tax exoneration and direct the Treasurer to refund this amount, which is the excess to the taxpayer with interest which is required by statute.
Thank you. I would like to remove item two. I was not here and will therefore be abstaining from that vote. But is there a motion for the remaining ones or any other ones that need to be removed?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Discussion. Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes.
Is there a motion for item?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes with Mr. Yakubowski abstaining.
Thank you. We're moving on to public presentations. Amy, has anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. There are several citizens signed up to speak. The first is Andre Mason Pierce, followed by Robert Thomas.
Please come forward, state your name, address, and you will have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead, sir.
Member of the board.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I may. It might be bothering my attention that at least some of the speakers may be here to discuss or speak on or on the SUP 15-001 CWS Communication Tower that the board has had a public hearing on but hasn't yet voted on. And the bylaws indicate that in that situation that there should be no public comment during public presentations on a matter that has already been the subject of a previous public hearing where no final vote has been taken. If the board, of course, the board may suspend the bylaws if it wants to, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention.
Thank you. Did Mr. McLaughlin?
Mr. Chairman, if we could suspend the bylaws to allow those that have come out here tonight to speak?
Okay, so there's a motion to suspend the bylaws to allow folks to speak on any issue that's on the agenda or anything else. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote on the motion.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Please, sir, go right ahead.
Members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again on behalf of the tower. My name is Andre Maison-Pierre, and I live on 13517 Fifth Corps Lane in Mineral Springs Plantations. On behalf of myself, my wife Helen, and my neighbor on Fifth Corps, Mrs. Mary Louji, I urge you to approve the proposed cell tower on the Catlet property. This will provide us with a most needed and very reliable cell reception. There's no need to reiterate the cogent arguments in support of the tower which have been previously expressed. Marion Hopkins emailed to you dated October 25 clearly debunks the argument that the tower will have devastating impact on the value of our property. Concerning the objection related to aesthetics, I'd like to make public an argument which I have previously raised in private. Every resident of either Mineral Springs Plantation or the estate of Chancellville, even though he or she may have lived in Spotsylvania all their lives, is but a Johnny come lately with respect to the Catlet's property. We all knew, or we should have known, prior to our purchases in either division, of the proximate existence of the Catlet property. We should have anticipated the Catlets might put their property to other permissible use besides the sawmill in order to generate additional sources of income. The Catlets have every right to expand operations on their property as long as such operation does not create a danger to their neighbors or to property, and as long as such expansion is within the law. The proposed cell tower will endanger no one. It will create no hazard to anybody's property. The Conning Zoning Authority has found no legal objection to it. Accordingly, any objection to the erection of the tower raised by the residents of either subdivision based on aesthetic should thus be rejected. Incidentally, in Paris, apartments which claim to provide a view of the Eiffel Tower, and that's a giant compared to any cell tower, goes for a very hefty premium. Thank you very much.
Robert Thomas, followed by Claude Dunn.
Good evening. I'm Robert Thomas. I own 35 acres on 15212 Spotswood Furnace Road. I'd like to speak for the tower. We need it very badly. When I'm on the property, especially if I'm inside, the, my cellphone simply doesn't work. I need to go outside in order to use it. It's an obvious safety hazard. But that's not the issue I'd like to reiterate again tonight. We've heard a lot about the devaluation of property around the cell tower. I've been a real estate broker, not an agent, but a broker with my own company for over 20 years in Virginia. All I can say about this tower is that without adequate mobile communications, the area will definitely have, this will be a negative factor in valuation for real estate property all throughout the area. If you, the fundamental mistake of those who are complaining about the loss of value is what will happen if there isn't adequate mobile service. The people who will be future buyers in the area around the tower are not people of my age, but a much younger group. In my age group, we use cell phones somewhat. They're important, but they're, they're not economically deeply important or part of the lifestyle. But if you look at a buyer in his 40s coming out of military or Northern Virginia, likely buyers for that area, for them, that's a different generation, and adequate mobile service is absolutely vital. And then think again about their children, another generation, teenagers, that will be, for them, a deal breaker, no doubt about it. They may like the bucolic two acres, sure, but that won't be the big consideration when they find out that they can't use their devices, their cell phones, the businesses that they start that depend upon mobile communications. This is something that economically needs to happen to Virginia. Sure, modern communication has a price. That's just part of life. The railroads changed a lot, so did highways, so do cars, and so will any kind of progress in communication. And it's a price we all have to pay.
Claude Dunn, followed by Carmine DiSpirito.
Claude Dunn, on his 743 Elise Ford Road. Just ask y'all to consider one thing that's more common horse sense than anything else. If I live next door to you, and when I bought a brand-new car and I thought it was the most beautiful thing in the world, you decided that, the only reason, that you just despised that color. It just really upset you. You'd take me to a court of law and try to sue me for damaging your property value? I don't think so. No judge would entertain that. Here we're restricting people from doing something that somebody else finds not attractive, that is obviously going to be economically viable to them. That's just plain wrong. Not only that, you know, it's been brought out time and time again that we really don't have cellphone coverage in our area. I mean, I'm a little tired of watching my wife going around trying to get up on chairs and stuff and find a signal so she can send a message out to her granddaughter. You know, that's not the end of the world, but it's still an inconvenience. And I know these young kids, they live on these things. So I'd really appreciate if y'all would just go ahead and stop all those delays and get this cell tower done, and everybody will love it, except for maybe half a dozen. Thank you very much.
Carmine DiSpirito.
Good evening, board. My name is Carmine DiSpirito. I live at 13821 Hunting Run Drive, Mineral Springs Plantation. I support the construction of the tower. We need it for emergency calls, fire, police, EMTs, park rangers, moms and dads with kids at school, visitors, and it goes on and on with the list. Also, for schoolwork. This is the change society. Our own personal experience, in recent weeks, we've had on-and-off problems with Comcast and our land-based phone. We had calls not coming in, no dial tone, unable to call out. I went to St. Patrick's Lot, which is for the parking of the church and school. The first day, the cellphone worked because the elevation is higher and you're closer to Route 3. I went back a second day, no signal, couldn't use it. After this maneuvering back and forth, I trust the board will approve going forward with the tower. This will benefit, benefit many people, not just in our subdivision, but also many who don't live in Mineral Springs Plantation. One other thing I'd like to add, they're building a new firehouse on Route 3 opposite the Chancellorsville Battlefield. It's a big building. And my understanding is the EMT is going to be moved in there from Harrison Road as well. And I'm sure these folks would appreciate a good signal should they come in our area like ours that has very little or no signal. You know, at our house, we don't have a signal. We have a daughter that works for Homeland Security. They have some of the best cell phones. She comes to the house, no signal. So I'd appreciate if you'd approve this, and I thank you all.
There are no other citizens signed up to speak.
Is there anybody here who has not spoken that would like to speak? Please come forward, name, address, and you have three minutes.
Mary Lou Collier, in Mr. Skinner's district. Several times I've been before the board about the need of a traffic light. Spotsylvania Parkway going uphill towards Coles and Cosner Corner. Last Wednesday morning, in my Bible study, we put on a prayer list, a terrible accident there. Lady was being placed in an ambulance. I don't know what it takes, but whoever's bailiwick that is in that, in your district, I appreciate if you would work with VDOT, the shopping center owners, to get a traffic light there. Your peak shopping season is upcoming. There won't be a light there. And I know it's been several years I've been talking about it, so we need to take action. There's an influx of more traffic, both directions, going towards the hospital as well as the new apartments, and then forthcoming new developments in that area. So that is a widely populated travel area, and there's no guidance. And sometimes you take the long route, you go up the hill, you can't go straight across, so you go up the hill to come down the hill to be safe. We need a traffic light there, and we need it today. It's, but it should have been yesterday, but I know it won't be tomorrow, but it should be very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak? Seeing nobody rise, we will move along with the agenda. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Next up is the public hearing on the recommended FY17 to FY21 CIP, Capital Improvement Plan. Bonnie?
Good evening. I don't have a presentation for this item this evening. Basically, the public hearing is based upon the CIP that was presented to you at your last meeting on October 13th. The total over the five-year period is $281.6 million. It includes general government projects, transportation projects, school projects, and utilities projects. And if you, there is a CIP work session later on on the board's agenda this evening, so if you don't have any questions now, hopefully we can answer those later. And if not, I'd ask that you open the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Yes, sir. Mr. Trampy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How much do we expect to transfer from the general fund in FY 2017?
Between eight and nine million.
And do we, do our financial guidelines give us flexibility on that, or is that automatic?
That's automatic. That's the 3.25% that will be policy in fiscal year 17.
The PowerPoint that we saw last time had a projection of future debt service to expenditure ratio. I was wondering, are you assuming in those calculations that interest rates will return to normal? They've been very low recently.
We're assuming slightly higher than what we obtained this year, and that's at the recommendation of the financial advisors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, declare the public hearing open. Has anybody signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this public hearing, dealing with our capital improvement projects? Seeing nobody rise, declare the public hearing closed. Is there a motion from the board?
Yeah, we do have a work session on this item later in the meeting, so there's no need for action at this point. Approval of the public hearing was to collect public comment on the CIP.
Then we'll wait. Mr. Ben Cala.
Sir, this would be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries, or the expansion of existing businesses or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically a recreational and tourism business, two manufacturing and/or distribution facilities, and a technology company. And whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn into closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically discussion concerning ATFD LLC and all versus the Board of Supervisors for Spotsylvania County, and BZA Appeals A15001 and A15002. And whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711A5 and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Thank you. Motion? Motion? Any discussion? Please vote.
Seven yes.
Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll-call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia, Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion to reconvene into closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in closed meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner? Ms. Heidig?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Moving along with our agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have the vote on SUP 15-001 CWS Communication Tower at Catlet Lumber, Chancellor District.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Patrick White, Planning Department, Spotsylvania County. This item, I guess I have some good news. The Board of Zoning Appeals.
Oh, yes.
Denied three appeals to the zone administrator's determination on this case. As you may recall, this case was last heard before you with the public hearing opened and closed on June 23rd, 2015. If you'd like, I can run through a PowerPoint presentation as a refresher. Otherwise, I'll stand by for your questions, and that is all.
Thank you. Questions? Discussion? Mr. McLaughlin?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. There's a motion on the table to approve. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Trampy?
Yes, the one thing that just keeps sticking in my mind from the public hearing, I'm certainly no expert, but the claim was that it was, if it's moved back 100 yards, there would be this massive loss of coverage. And I just, I don't see how that's possible. I mean, 100 yards from the limit of the coverage, yeah, you'll probably lose, lose some there, but I don't see how moving it back on the, the same property 100 yards is going to cause you to lose coverage over miles.
Although I'd certainly welcome the applicant to speak on the subject, the, the reason that the applicant did not oblige the county or seek to push it back any further was for two reasons, notably the, most importantly, the landlord wouldn't agree to it. The second reason was pushing it back 100 feet would push it back into the core Battlefield District, which would cause some additional application hurdles, as reported by the applicant. If, if you'd like, I could have them come forward to speak more on that subject, or we'll stand by for the next question.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? There's a motion on the table to approve. If there's no more discussion, call for the vote.
Five yes with Dr. Trampy and Mr. Yakubowski voting no.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, next we have an update, a long-awaited update. Ed Petrovich is here. He has pictures. I read it in the Freelance Star. It must be true. VRE is opening their station in Spotsylvania on November the 16th, and our parking lot is looking great.
That's 2015 also.
That, yes, sir. 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good evening, members of the board. You kind of stole my thunder there, Mr. Taylor. The Spotsylvania VRE station is ready to open, and the Virginia Railway.
You mean this year, Ed?
Yes.
This year. November 16.
November 16, 2015.
We are just excited.
The VRE will commence VRE commuter rail service from the new Spotsylvania station on Monday, November 16, 2015. VRE built the station and the platform, while Spotsylvania County built the 1,500-space parking lot for commuters. Spotsylvania County and VRE will also host a ribbon-cutting ceremony on November 16 at 10:00 a.m. The Spotsylvania Station is located southwest of US 17 and Crossroads Parkway. It will become the southernmost terminus for the VRE train service on the Fredericksburg Line, and represents the first extension of VRE commuter rail service since it began operation in 1992. Move on to the next slide here. The station consists of 1,500-space parking lot, with free parking, I might add. And just to get you oriented here, the, this is Route 17 here. This is Crossroads Parkway going out towards Route 17 in Benchmark. You can see the entrance is split as you come in. There's a parking, a kiss-and-ride area here to come out. This area here is for bus drop-off and pickup. There is restroom facilities and a 700-foot-long covered platform with a canopy. There were also some road improvements that went with this. We have done a realignment of the Benchmark and Crossroads intersection and put a signalized intersection here with some additional turn lanes as well. Again, it's a signalized intersection at Benchmark and Route 17 now. The light is scheduled to become functional this Thursday. There is a 700-foot canopy platform. You'll also note in this picture that there are three rails. The CSX Trans- rails. The CSX Transportation and Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation are continuing the construction of that third track between the Crossroads Parkway and Mine Road to more efficiently accommodate passenger and freight rail traffic in that corridor. That third track project is actually scheduled for completion by the end of 2015, but does not affect the opening of the platform for rail service on November 16. As I mentioned earlier, there's restroom facilities. This is a picture of the covered restroom facilities with a covered walkway that leads up to the platform. And as the picture shows, there's a train there, and train service is going to start November 16. The first train will depart Spotsylvania Station at 4:57 a.m. Monday morning, November 16. Train service from Spotsylvania will begin using the existing schedule, with trains departing eight minutes prior to the Fredericksburg Station depart times. Please go to vre.org for all the train arrival and departure times. VRE will add an additional train on the Fredericksburg Line and make minor schedule adjustments prior to the end of 2015. The media and general public are also invited to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony on November 16 at 10:00 a.m., where local, state, and federal elected officials will be in attendance to help celebrate the station opening. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, one thing I'd like to say is that the platform itself is much longer than a 700-foot-covered platform.
That's correct.
We do have close to 1,500 feet of platform there, because the goal is to extend our trains as we grow bigger and bigger, rather than have five cars, six cars, seven cars. So that's something I did want to, and again, I just want to say thank you to VDOT, to Spotsylvania County staff, VRE themselves, and all the localities representing PRTC and VRE. Without their help, we would not have gotten this completed, without them voting to support us during these last few years that we've been struggling with this. And again, I can say, we wish we could have had it done sooner, but unfortunately, Mother Nature, we can't control that. We can't control a lot of things that are out of our hands. But I will say that everything we did control, and we could control, we did to the best of our ability. So it'll be a worthwhile opening for this county, and the asset that it brings down to this county for more business down here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Ed.
Next up, we have an update on the Dominion Raceway. Progress of that project.
Is this live? Oh, it is. I wanted to let Ed know I went by the VRE station on Sunday, and it was beautiful. I mean, absolutely fabulous, and he did a great job, and I understand the pressure he's under. Believe me, I understand the pressure about time and getting things completed. Anyway, I was here about two and a half years ago. It was May 2013, I guess, and I was really nervous. This room makes me nervous. This is a very powerful room, and I left there that night and just was thrilled with the outcome. And we know some of the supervisors have had a chance to kind of come out and check some of our progress. We put a lot of work into Dominion Raceway so far, and we know you're busy, and so we wanted to kind of bring some of our progress here tonight and talk to you a little bit about where we are, when we think we'll open, and some of the work that we've done. So since our meeting in May, we have cleared about 130 acres of land. We have moved about 500,000 cubic yards of dirt. We have installed over four miles of underground piping. We have brought concrete light poles 85 feet long, each weighing about 15,000 pounds, from Northern Virginia up I-95, if you can imagine. We have fabricated a bridge in South Carolina that took 26 tractor-trailer loads to bring to our site, and 300 cubic yards of concrete alone for the footing. We have fabricated two buildings in the Butler Plant in Pennsylvania, and have brought that material to the site in 16 tractor-trailer loads. We have gone into the trucking business. We are trucking every day from Baltimore, Maryland, to the site. Barriers. We have 2,626 9,000-pound barriers that we can bring four to five times a day on a semi to our site. We've been doing that now for months, and we have months to go. We have shipped in a paver that was used to pave Daytona Speedway. It came in on three tractor-trailer loads, and it has paved our oval track and has completed that paving at Dominion Raceway. We have finished the infield building and are now working on the main structure, the 36,000-square-foot structure. And we hope to open our facility, and believe that we will, for our season in March. Some of the other things that we have done, and some of the things that we talked to this board about at the time we were approved, was about community, and how important it was to us to be part of the community. We have co-sponsored several golf outings. We have participated in several National Night Out events. We have held a Mopar Palooza event to benefit the Fisher House, and we have donated to several other worthwhile causes. The other part of our discussion that night was about Thornburg in the Woodford area, and, you know, what we thought that this operation might bring to it. And I'm pleased to tell you that the hotel, as you well know, is under construction. Will deliver about the same time we plan to open. The long vacant retail areas are being leased and constructed and filled. There's remodeling of old buildings as we speak, and pricing for property near our facility have increased to, and in some cases, threefold since our proposals, our zoning. So we brought kind of a slideshow here, and I guess we'll kind of run that, and I'm going to turn this over to Edwin Pardue, who can talk to you a little bit about the future of Dominion Raceway and entertainment. So, thank you.
I'm Edwin Pardue, the General Manager of Dominion Raceway. Thank you to the board and to the staff for giving us an opportunity tonight to give you an update and let you know where we're going, what's next with this project. Steve, his partner Jerry Evans, they've done a great job of bringing us to this point. But the question is, where do we go next? And what we wanted to do for you tonight was to bring some pictures of facilities around the country that are like ours. But we had a problem. There are no facilities around the country like ours, like the one that we're building in Spotsylvania County. So we're going to go on a virtual tour. This is what it'll look like when it's completed, and you'll be able to see some things you recognize from those pictures. In the centers of four-tenths mile, 14-degree banked oval track, 21 events are already scheduled for next year. The first one being April 9 is our opening race. We'll add practice events as well. We had an event last Saturday. We're expecting about 120 drivers to show up to register their car numbers. We had now 248 is the number right now, over double what we expected. This is the two-mile road course. That front straightaway is a half-mile long, and the cornerstone of this is our Drivers Club. It's just like joining a country club. Instead of going to play 18 holes, you're driving around the two-mile course. They told us, your first member needs to be an ambassador for your club. Well, by golly, we hit a home run. Our first member was Randy Bell, a retired United States ambassador. In the center, you'll see also where we'll do our drive-in movies. Also, concerts coming to the far area, and on the far right-hand side is our drag strip. Now, the oval and the road course will be opened in March. That drag strip will be added later next summer. In the middle, 36,600-square-foot building with a restaurant, with a bar, with meeting space, which places also for our friends at EDA to work and have meetings out of. You're coming back up the drag strip now, and this is the paddock area for the road course. We've already hosted Ferrari of Washington, Lamborghini of Washington, the Porsche Club, folks from this area, but also, very important, folks from outside of the area who will come into Spotsylvania County for two- and three-day weekends. Mopar Palooza, Steve touched on, coming back next year. I spoke with some of the folks in the Spotsylvania-area hospitality industry. They're already taking reservations for May of 2016. So what's next? A lot of excitement for us. We're looking at 300,000 visitors next year, and over 200 events, and it will kick off on April 9 with our first official event, and there'll be some practices and other things beforehand. But I think what's coming, and our opportunity to sort of be at the front door of Spotsylvania County and welcome folks in, some of the work we've done with tourism, with EDA, and laying some of that groundwork, we're very, very excited, and we just thank you for the opportunity to give you an update tonight.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Mr. Sebula?
Yes, I just want to say I had the opportunity to visit the track on Friday, and I was totally impressed with the progress made. The professionalism in the design and how this racetrack is going to be a showcase, not only for Virginia, but for the United States and the racing community. This is really something that we've got here, and it's going to go forward, and I know will be a great success.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you to the board. We really appreciate the support.
Yeah, I will mention that we did bring some packets. I don't know if those got to everyone, but it is an update on all of our marking. Beautiful. Thank you very much.
Very nice. Thank you. April 9. Yes. Next on the agenda is the Spotsylvania representation at the State Fair of Virginia. Is that you, Ms. Heidig?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, as I have tried to do throughout my term, I'd like to recognize the fact that Spotsylvania County does have a strong agricultural tie. This year, once again, we have a number of people who participated in the State Fair, which unfortunately had to close early because of the weather. But we have strongly and successfully been represented by our citizens of Spotsylvania, showing the outstanding commitment of our county's agricultural community. The State Fair of Virginia website lists likely Spotsylvania community participants in several categories, and I strongly encourage the community to browse through it because of the fact that some of our Spotsia people use zip codes other than Spotsylvania. It's very difficult for us to determine, so I don't have a list myself, and I don't have any specific numbers. But the data can be accessed through www.statefair.statefairva.org, and then there's /competitions/education/2015/competitions. Of special note, Hank Houston of Spotsylvania in the Berkeley District grew the largest entry in this year's Giant Pumpkin Contest. You probably may have seen it in the paper. His pumpkin weighed in at 1,203.2 pounds. The previous record was set in 2007 of 1,138 pounds. And Mr. Houston, or Houston, however, I'm not sure of the pronunciation, also had an impressive entry last year. In fact, I think he won the giant pumpkin last year as well. The diverse creative categories at the fair are a reminder of the still-so-important, vibrant agricultural community in Spotsylvania, which thrives amid our community, which has also, as you know, commercial and recreational and other interests. I want to say, and I know Mr. Sebula joins me, thank you to all of our community who are a part of Spotsylvania agriculture, and especially at this time, to those who expended time, energy, and talent to participate in the 2015 State Fair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sebula?
Yes, and I would like to add that that great pumpkin, if you will, is on display at Ace Hardware on Route 1. Southbound, if you go down there, you can't miss it. It's right in front of the store with a nice display around it, and it's really something to see, and I'm sure it'll be there at least till Halloween.
Where's the Ace Hardware on Route 1?
Route 1 South, just south of.
Thornburg?
Thornburg.
Just south.
I think it's Ace Hardware.
Anyway, go south on Route 1, past, just past the.
It's on the right, right?
Yes, it's on the right-hand side.
Something that big. I'm sure you won't miss it.
I have never been able to figure out how they can grow these things so big, and not only grow them, but actually move them to participate in competitions. I mean, if you have an opportunity to go see it, I haven't seen one sort of in real life, but I've seen them on TV. But it's amazing to me. And if you read the article in the paper, he spent a lot of time, I think he even came back briefly from his family vacation to make sure that it was well-watered and fed and everything on the way, so. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to deviate from our schedule just a smidge to go back into closed session for one item. Mr. Ben Cala?
Yes, sir. This would be your resolution to adjourn into closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries, the expansion of existing businesses or industries, and no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically a recreational and tourism business; and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.23711A5, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No moved.
Thank you. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, before you go in, because Carl and Courtney are personal friends of mine, as well as the fact that we have business dealings, I am going to kind of recuse myself, abstain from this meeting, and not participate.
Thank you. We still need one more vote. Okay, thank you. We're in closed session.
Six, yes, with Ms. Heidig abstaining.
This would be your resolution to return to open meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting, and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters are lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion to convene in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in a closed meeting.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Trampy?
Aye.
Mr. Sebula?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. This now takes us back to item number seven, under Presentations and Reports by Others, item seven. Board members requested that the proper guidelines be brought back at this meeting for further discussion.
We actually, we're at number six. Do we want to, Stars and Stripes update?
Sorry. You're right. We are at number six, which is the Stars and Stripes, update on the Stars and Stripes spectacular. I'm very sorry. Skip ahead.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. Chris and I are here tonight to talk to you about the 2015 Stars and Stripes, and also give you information about our plan of action for the upcoming one. The Stars and Stripes has been a tremendous growth and excitement from the residents since its beginning back in 2005. It's grown tremendously from just being a fireworks display in an open field over at the Veiko's property, the courthouse property, and it's grown to the point where it's not just a fireworks display, but an event that has multiple activities. that has multiple activities throughout the day, from the free events for the kids to the, to the adults having multiple stages that they can experience different music. And then we have the civic groups that are here, the craft and vendors, the local businesses that are available to come out and, and set up on the site. So we just wanted to talk about that a little bit. And of course, you know, we have our various foods that are here from like a fair-like type of event. You know, we couldn't, couldn't do this without the Vaco's company. You know, they give us a generous donation to, to cover their fireworks. And they've also given us the opportunity to have the event on the Courthouse Village since the event has grown so much. Because of the growth of the event, with the attendance and expectations of the attendees, we've worked to develop a more extensive event as far as if we have a delay, or if the event has to be canceled or postponed. At one point, we just had fireworks. If, if the event was canceled, we just had fireworks. And that's what people were looking for. But we realized after this past year with the weather that we encountered, that we needed to go back and look at that and provide more opportunities if it is rained out, or if it is postponed. So we've developed a contingency plan, and Kristin's going to talk about that.
This year was scheduled for Saturday, June 27th. There was the chance of inclement weather, which we knew going into it. However, with the way the rain date was set up, we wanted to try and have the event on that Saturday because moving it to Sunday doesn't allow for you to have the full event. We had a safety briefing at 2:30 during which we, a tornado watch was issued. We did not feel that it was safe to continue with the event that day. So based on the weather conditions, the readiness of the fireworks company, they were having a lot of difficulty setting up for everything that they have to do. It's a long process, that's even longer when they're having to cover everything for rain. So they would not have been ready to shoot the fireworks at the 9:30 time that we had, that we were shooting for. The rain date was the following day. We went from 7 o'clock to 10 o'clock. And as, as the plan was then, it was fireworks only, no food, no music, no entertainment, just the fireworks show. So getting feedback from the community, different people, we, the biggest thing, vendors were unhappy that they weren't able to sell the next day, as it was in place with the plan. They didn't have a permit to sell for the second day, the food vendors. The kids' activities wouldn't have been able to be put up on the, on Saturday because the ground was so wet, and they weren't scheduled to be there for the next day either. We had a few people ask about food on our rain makeup, which we didn't have available for them. And we just realized that it just seemed kind of lifeless without any music there. So we've come up with some plans that we'd like to share with you to help in the event that we do have another rain out. Plan one is going to be the event as scheduled, so hopefully we continue to have the weather that we've had the past 10 years, and that this one rain out was by chance. Plan two is going to be if we have to postpone. So 2A, we have for a situation that would be similar to what happened this past year. We really don't think the weather is going to allow for us to have the event as it's planned on the day of the event. So we would postpone all of the events to the rain date, and we can notify people sooner with this plan in place. Plan two would be something similar to what happened in 2012 when we had a storm coming our way and had to evacuate people to the shelters and suspend the events that were going on. Once we got the all-clear, we were able to resume the event and had the fireworks that evening. 2C would be if weather came through once the event had started and we were unable to do the fireworks that evening. We would then pick up the event the next day at the time that the event was suspended. So if on Saturday we get to 7 o'clock and weather comes through, we can't do the fireworks, then we would pick it back up on, at 7 o'clock on Sunday. Some special considerations for this is additional cost, the amendments that we have to make to the proposals and permits, the timing of the postponement, and considering a later start time. You all have received the breakdown of the expenses. The biggest changes would be to our entertainment and transportation. So in order to accommodate entertainment for the second day, for music, we would need to pay bands and the sound company a 50% retainer fee. So that has been included into, into the fee. The kids' activities to have for the second day is going to double in costs, which they're already costly to begin with. And then our transportation fee to use the shuttles for the school buses would also The amendments to the proposals, as it, as, because the, it was supposed to be fireworks only for the rain date, we did not have the radio station there for the second day. That's a very easy change to the proposal. If at the very least, we could have had the radio station there just playing music, I think that would have been, made an incredible difference. The VDOT permits, special events permits, and the food vendor permits for the health department would also have to be adjusted to include the second day. So both, both of those, very easy, straightforward. For the timing of decision-making, with, with the option to move everything to the second day, we can cancel sooner so that we can allow more notification. Earliest we could do would probably be Friday afternoon, based on our interpretation of the weather forecast. And then probably the latest would be Saturday at 12, just based on our setup and who, who has to get there and the different people that have to set up by that time. And then of course, if the event has started, then we would make postponements as the weather We are proposing a later start time of 4 o'clock. Currently, it starts at 3:00. But entertainment, the two out of three stages don't have entertainment featured until 4:30. So really, we have an hour and a half of lead-in time. And that would also cut down costs on transportation if we're, if we're not having them arrive until 4:00. Now, we're proposing that the event for 2016 be Saturday, July 2nd, with a rain date on July 3rd, because the 4th is Monday. And we are looking for your approval on that.
That's consistent with what we've done in the past, the Saturday before.
And then what we would like to know from you is, what are the important things that you would like to see featured should we have to have a rain date? The main concerns are the kids' activities, because they are costly, and if transportation's needed. If you would like to, it gets, it gets difficult when, based on timing of when you're rescheduling, basically. So if we have to reschedule at 7 o'clock, is it worth having one hour of kids' activities there to pay for the full day of kids' activities, is what we're looking at it from.
We think we need to have the buses, based on what we saw this past year, just because so many people have started to use, started to use the buses. So that's, that's an option, but we, we think that that's a need. And definitely, we think the music is a need. We saw that last year. It's disappointing for us too. So, but the kids' activities is the one that we're kind of not too sure on what, we can go either way on that really, to be honest.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Are these kids' activities, are they basically free to the kids?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're not collecting any piece of, the total burden of cost is on us?
Yes, ma'am.
And about what, I, I had a hard time reading your chart. About, what do they cost?
12,300 per day.
I'm sorry?
12,300 per day.
12,300 a day. And what, what do they entail?
It's the moon bounces and small carnival rides and things like that. We have about 14 of them that are spread out throughout the whole event.
My, my question would be, could we like scale it down? If we had to do it a second day? In other words, do we have to have the whole 12,000, or could, you know, could we do with...
We could. The reason why it has grown to that number is to limit the wait time for the kids, because the lines get quite long.
Yeah, but if you do it on a second day, you probably won't have the crowd, as much crowd either. Perhaps, I don't know.
Right.
We were surprised how big the crowd was this year, but it is a smaller crowd, there's no question about that, but it was rather large.
And I would assume too, if you were just doing the fireworks, there weren't that many kids. Were there a lot of kids?
I saw more teenagers probably. If I had to pick a group that I saw that stood out the most, and I'm not, I'm not sure why, but they wouldn't be using the kid activities. That's more for 4-11.
Right, and that's what, that's what I was thinking, that, that it might be some way that we could, we could sort of structure this so that we could provide activities, but assume, you know, maybe a, you know, 60% of what we would expect, you know? And also on Sundays, a lot of times, people have other things they're doing.
Right.
That might cut down on the crowd.
Yeah, we could look at doing a 50% or 60% the second day.
It might, it might be better to scale. Of course, one of my concerns was, and I think we all got a letter from one of the vendors who basically took it, you know, took a beating on, you know, and I know from participating in wine festivals that there's considerable cost for vendors to be set up and, and everything else. And so to me, I'd, I'd be concerned to try to figure out some ways so that, that they don't come up, you know, with a total loss, if that's possible as well.
These plans will help alleviate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Subula?
Yes, in looking at your plans A, B, and whatever, what I see is something that, that concerns me a little bit is we don't have a Plan C. And, and that plan would be if we have an event scheduled for Saturday and it's, has to be canceled or postponed because of rain, and Sunday ends up being the same way, what are we going to do about the event? Are we going to, or is there a plan to schedule it for the next weekend? I know that, that the fireworks has a, has a difficulty for a week. I know there are, there are situations, but this is a considerable expense for the county, and we are, we are expending money whether we have the event or not. And I would like to see our citizens benefit from having the event, and, and would like to see a, a, an alternate date, if that could be done. I know it's not out, out, off the wall, but it's something we need to look at, I believe.
It, it's something that we have discussed, we've discussed it with Mr. Taylor, and it's certainly doable. The cost would increase.
Certainly.
The, we are almost at the mercy of the fireworks company, because they have other commitments, so they kind of have to fit us in where they're able to. And with that comes additional issues, like with the VDOT permits and closing the roads. VDOT permits have to be submitted so many months ahead of time and things like that. So we are, we have looked at it. We, I don't think we've come to any solid agreement or disagreement on what it would entail. But it would be considerably more difficult and more costly.
Recognizing that, I don't know, I think VDOT is something that we could work around. My major concern, and I, and I just throw this out now, is that the, the fireworks and, and the recoverability of them if they were to not be displayed, or set off, or whatever word you want to use. So anyhow, those are my comments.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things, having been involved in wine festivals, is I know there is such a thing as rain insurance. Do we get rain insurance? It may be less expensive.
We don't now.
It may be less expensive to invest in rain insurance than to try to find another day. And that the, you can, you know, I know, I know it's not inexpensive, but when I look at the kinds of costs you're talking about here, it may be less expensive, and it would give us an option where we could recoup some of our costs and perhaps even help vendors and others recoup some of theirs.
We can check into that.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Skinner?
Do you have a list of vendors that if they can't, if they get canceled on Saturday, they can't come back on Sunday?
No. What happened this year was that the food vendors, the health permit was only good for the Saturday day, because we didn't have them in place for the second day.
So...
So because of that, we didn't allow any vendors to return for the second day this year.
Well, who, who do they get the, the health permits come from who? The health department then, in the state? So is there any way that, you know, because it sounds like, you know, having a rain, rain out is not something that, is unusual. I mean, we, we've had it before and have it again. What could we do to work with the health department to say, you know, if you, if, if it's good for Saturday, why wouldn't it be good for Sunday? I mean...
From what I understand, it's just the way the contract is written now, but we have already spoken with the health department, and it's just, it's easy enough to just have it put into the application for them for future, for the future. So we, we already plan to address that issue.
I, I think that'd be very important. Now, maybe they have another commitment on Sunday, but the point is, that, that's fine, but I, do they pay for that? They pay for that health commitment?
They pay, it, it goes to the health department, yes.
Yeah, so it depends to me, it, it sounds to me that they would be willing to come back just to, to make money there if they didn't have another commitment already.
Yes.
So I think we should look in that, and I certainly think we should look into the vendors as far as the kids', you know? The other thing I saw in your presentation was, you said four or 7:00 PM until, if you just have the fireworks, you're going to open it up at 7:00? And the fireworks go at what, 9:30?
That's what we did this year. With, because it was, because the plan was to do fireworks only, as the rain date was planned up until this year, we chose 7:00 to start, because we didn't have any other activities slated. If we, if we rescheduled and did our rain date, it would start at the normal start time, so we would have the kids' activities throughout the day. If the, if rain came in on Saturday at any time, then we would pick up where we left off on Sunday, which we may or may not gauge how much time the kids' activities would be open, because the kids' activities actually run from start time to 8:00 PM, so that they can close them down before it gets dark and get them out, before the fireworks begin.
The fireworks start at what time? Just be, is it 9:00 or 9:30?
Usually 9:20. 9:20.
9:20.
15, 9:20.
You know, my only point is, if I get there at 7:00, 2 hours and 20 minutes with kids that are very restless and stuff like that, that's a long time. Not that we can move the fireworks up, because we don't have control of when the sun comes down and everything, I understand that. But maybe it'd be better just advertise a later time, when we do that. You know what I'm saying? If we're just going to have fireworks, maybe 8:00 would be a start time, or 7:30, 7:45, so you're not sitting there with your kids and trying to figure out what to do with them for two hours.
We would still have the music. We would still have the music.
You still plan to have the music there then too?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know, but, you know.
Thank you. Other questions? So you're looking for a motion from the board? I know that there's a couple of questions if...
The date is the...
We need the, you know, we need guidance on the date.
I would move that we approve the date. I'd like to, to have some sort of additional discussions, or have you come back with some of the, some additional information before I approve Plan A, B, C, particularly what rain insurance would cost and other things.
Is that in the form of a motion? Is that in the form of a motion?
My motion is that we approve the date.
Okay. Any discussion? Saying none, please vote.
Seven, yes.
And then we'll look for you all to come back with answers to those questions, and we'll farm it up.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving along, Mr. Taylor?
Moving along, Mr. Chairman. We have Bonnie Jewell on FY seventeen to twenty-one CIP.
Good evening. This presentation is really meant to be a work session on the CIP. I made a presentation to you at the last board meeting on October thirteenth. This really hasn't changed. The projects within the CIP, the recommended CIP, really haven't changed.
The floor computer, please.
So in the interest of time, what I'd like to do is just go back through the slides from the last presentation, not give you a presentation, but as the slides, or as the slides progress, and we go through these various types of projects, if you have a question, the project managers are here and are here for the purpose of answering your questions on these CIP projects. So I'm just gonna go ahead and go through these. In total, general government within the five-year period is twenty-six point one million dollars. It's made up of a number of categories, and the first two categories are shown here on this slide, maintaining assets of twelve and a half million, and then under other general government, the only project is the animal shelter at three and a half million. So if you have any questions on these particular projects, the project managers are here to answer your questions.
Mr. Skinner.
Question, please, on the general, the animal shelter. I know that at one time, we had people looking at different localities and what their animal shelter looked like and stuff of that nature. Do we have an update as far as design and size and anything of that nature, what we need and what we might, might copy or might use from other localities?
We did look at other localities, Mr. Skinner. The initial design came back about four times what we had budgeted, so we are looking at other options now, and we'll come back to the board just as soon as we get the report back from the engineers and architects.
Are these the ones we went up to Maryland and down also towards Norfolk area, in that area that we looked at?
Yes, sir. They visited several, Lynchburg, Virginia Beach, and there were a couple of others that they did site visits after they sat down with the sheriff's office and went over what they wanted in the design. We got the initial cost estimates back, and they were extremely high. So we're looking at other options.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Trampy. Oh, that answer, okay. Ms. Hyde.
On, on these, I know that, that there are a lot of, you know, sort of animal-loving people out there. Is there a way that we can ask for sponsors and/or donations for the county shelter to reduce, since we want to make it a no-kill shelter, to reduce the cost to the citizens? I mean, just like I'm, you know, I know the SPCA gets donors to help them build, and they have a very nice facility. And I'm just wondering, can the county do something like that?
Yes, I mean, that's a possibility.
You know, we can certainly prepare a solicitation.
You know, it just, it just seems to me that there are a lot of people out there that may want to, to help us rather than spend all of our taxpayers' tax dollars, and if we could, if we could get some of those people to, to chip in, a little here, a little there, sooner or later, it adds up, that that might be something to look at doing.
Do we have something like that in the tax bills that will be going out shortly? You know, the personal property that we pay right before Christmas?
And we can look at doing that, yes.
They're already out? Oh, great.
I think they probably, I think the bills have probably already gone to the mailing company, but we can check into that.
Right. I was just thinking that water bills, you know, just ways to get out the information, because don't we have two funds already? Playground, school playground and another one, I do believe.
The dog park, I believe.
Well, there's a dog park one, too. Okay. So that would be an idea, just to put it out there and see.
Right, though I, I might be thinking of something a little more formal than that in some ways.
No, that's fine. We can just start there, is my point, is get the word out and see if there's interest, and then we can build.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would say we have a million-dollar proffer as well towards the animal shelter, don't we? So that's not included in this number, is it?
It's not.
Yeah, yeah.
From what development do we have that?
Jackson Village, I think.
And I don't believe we've actually received that.
No, but I'm saying it's planned, so. It's kind of the...
Well, we would have to see when, when it's being paid and...
It's over the twenty years, like over the twenty years of the bonds, right? We just, as it comes in, it would pay it.
Okay.
Right. So in that case, then, if we were to do this, and right now, this, this project is planned for fiscal year 2017, so we would have to front that money and then reimburse ourselves over time as we got those little pots of money.
Right. Other questions? Subola?
Yeah, where do we stand on these other shelters that we looked and these costs as compared to what we have here in this budget for three point five? How much, how much higher were these figures that, that we're looking at? Because I think we need some, we need a target to look at if we're gonna ask people to donate to something and...
Yeah, but I'm saying over and above this is...
The, the initial engineer's estimate that we got after the initial study was fourteen point one million.
Fourteen point one.
Yes, sir.
Now, was that just for what we wanted to do, or was that looking at sort of an average of what had been spent by surrounding communities? Like I know, I think Stafford is now getting ready to build a new, a new animal shelter.
That, that was based upon the work sessions that they, that the consultants had with the sheriff's department and the clinic.
Well, that's, seems like quite an escalation when we started off originally with a, a one million estimate.
Yep. That's, the, the size of the site and the features that they, that they were looking for in the site, that's what drove the cost estimate. That didn't include any land acquisition costs. That was just for design and construction. So we've gone back to the drawing board. We're working with the design engineers to come up with some other alternatives, which would also include staying at the existing facility and making improvements to the existing facility.
Yeah, I, I read the, what, eighty-page document, I may be wrong on the page number now, that was the state requirements for a, for an animal shelter, and I'm just wondering if, if we were meeting minimal requirements in accordance with that document, or these are pie-in-the-sky requirements?
Actually, the reports that, that I have seen from the regulatory agencies have pointed out some minor deficiencies that could be corrected within the existing facility. Now, that does not address the need for additional space.
Right.
So what we're looking at is the possibility of making those improvements to the existing facility and possibly adding on to the existing facility.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I know that when we first started talking about it, one of the things that was pointed out was that we were looking at that, on one of the slides, that the, the data for what was going to be required had come from the Humane Society for the United States. I hope we are not using that, but are using state guidelines to, to, you know, because I know that, I'm sure that they would have bells and whistles built in that we may be able to, to adequately care for and house the animals and meet state standards as opposed to doing anything sort of elaborate, if you will.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? I'd just say that I know Prince William is looking at, at building a new one. Theirs is forty years old, and the article that came out a little while ago, four weeks ago, they were estimating their new facility at twelve point two million. So perhaps we can talk to them and see what they're doing to, to keep the cost down. If not, if they, they were also looking at expanding their existing shelters also. So my, my question, and I think Mr. Subola hit on it too, was are we starting with what the state is requiring us at, at the base level, and we're just building a square box as, as it should be? We're not putting all the frills and, and all the extras that are unnecessary, because I would like to start there, see how much that, a true facility for cats and dogs actually looks like. And then if we, you know, want to put in the, the tile floors and the, and the other niceties, we can talk about that later. But a base model, no-kill shelter is, I think, what, what we're, what I'm after, at least.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Perhaps, because I did read, I thought that Stafford was looking to build another one. Prince William, can we do maybe a regional or a group effort to build? I don't know how that would be managed or anything else, but, you know, it's, because I know like Stafford's is not, I don't know how old it is. It may be, it may be twenty years old, but it was actually built as a proffer at one, one time, and now they're looking for a new facility as well. But maybe there's some regional cooperation we may be able to work out somehow, you know, like build it on land that sort of abuts both counties, or I don't know. But that seems, seems like, as, as, as much as, as much as I care for animals and as much as I would prefer a no-kill shelter, and it, it just seems to me that, that some of these estimates that I've heard are pretty outrageous in terms of what may need to be done. I could be wrong, but it just seemed, and we clearly don't have that much money in our CIP to do that.
And they seem outrageous, especially when we thought that the original amount was outrageous to begin with. So this is... Even, even more so. So that, that would be an interesting thing. I, I do think the solicitations and the fundraising would be a way to help, but regardless of, of how we do that, I think that the facility that's built should not be an extravagant facility. It should do its job and, and do its, what it's there for, for it to do. You know, the, the extras, I don't think are, are really necessary.
I would also like to see a concerted campaign on spay and neuter, because what creates our problem is, is several-fold. One is that we have animals that are running around, creating more animals, which spaying and neutering would solve. And the other thing is people, you know, they, they occasionally will, will have an animal that is basically unsuited, and then we wind up with that. So I think more sort of educational programs as well, perhaps, in terms of, you know, getting the appropriate pet and, and caring for it would be, would be helpful and help reduce costs, too, because it's being driven in many cases by the number of animals that we have.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right.
The next group of projects are information services projects, and as I'm thinking about the ordering of these slides, perhaps I should have ordered this a little bit differently. But if we move ahead a couple of slides, just to give you the magnitude of the efforts and the coordination of these systems, sometimes I know it seems like we're including in the CIP large sums of money for technology, and we are, but it's because we have these complicated, complex interaction, interactive systems. And to give you an idea, this is just the CAD system and all the connections it has to other public safety systems. This does not include other systems that aren't public safety, like the finance system and the commissioner's system and the treasurer's system. But we give this to you as just a, a quick visual of how complicated things are, how interactive they are, and that's, that's what the need is for these dollars that we request year after year for technology. And certainly, Jane can go into a lot more detail about that, but I just wanted to give you that, that picture as we start the discussion here on information services requests. The public safety information services type projects are six point four million, and you can see what those are listed here. At the most recent planning commission meeting, the planning commission found in conformance with the CIP, the chancellor tower replacement and the radio project towers at Company Nine and at Cedar Forest Elementary.
Questions?
The non-public safety information services projects are listed here. It's replacement of computers and servers, and that's an annual, annual cycle of various replacements. And then you can see the other systems below. The upgrades to those systems are one point one million, and its various systems is listed there in the bullet points. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the solid waste projects. Over the five-year CIP, solid waste projects are ten point three million dollars. It includes the construction of various facilities at six million dollars, and you can see those four projects outlined there at the top portion of the screen. And then the solid waste equipment replacements are four point three million dollars, and that, those are listed at the bottom of the screen.
Questions?
Moving on to the parks and recreation projects, seven million dollars over the five-year period, six point six million dollars is facility construction and maintenance, and you can see the projects outlined there. And then a half a million dollars for equipment, which is Patriot Park field lighting. No questions on that. We will move on to the fire and rescue projects. It's eighteen million dollars over the five-year period, two point three million dollars in facility construction, the fire training center, the Company Twelve site acquisition and design. I will note that at the last plan, planning commission meeting, by virtue of a tie vote, the planning commission found the site acquisition and design to not be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And then fifteen point seven million dollars in equipment replacement.
That was site acquisition and design for what year?
It's in 2021, the farthest year of the CIP.
Okay. Questions?
Under transportation, thirty-two point nine million dollars over the five-year period. And you can see the projects listed here. Hickory Ridge and One Eighteen are the balance, our share of the balance of revenue sharing that we have already been approved for. And then Exit One Twenty-Six is the J-Ramp and implementation of the corridor studies, which are set to get underway shortly.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question about the J-Ramp. So a recent transportation committee meeting, and I'm not sure if there's staff here that can talk to it, it was brought up that moving forward on the J-Ramp would also require improvements to be made on Two Oh Eight, which I'm not sure we've accounted for.
I do know that we've talked about as part of the implementation of the corridor studies, there being some improvements at Two Oh Eight in South Point and also at Route One in South Point.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, those would have to be in our plans. They would not have to be done concurrently with the J-Ramp. They would just have to be in the plans for some future date.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and the other thing with the J-Ramp, too, is that, that is not eligible for matching funds. So the county's bearing the expense of that, because that is federal highways, and matching funds are not applicable. funds are not applicable to that.
Correct. And the 13 and 1/2 million that's shown here is the midpoint of the range of costs that we've been given. Moving on to the schools, as I noted last time, I want to be very clear to say that the school CIP, we won't have that until the middle of November. So what I've done as a placeholder in last, last meetings, presentation, and tonight is include what the schools had in their most recent adopted version of the CIP. They've included $21 million to renovate and expand Cortland High School. This project was found to be in compliance of the comprehensive plan by the planning commission. And they have $86.5 million total over the five-year period for a combination of new and replacement buses, capital maintenance, and technology replacements and upgrades.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Bonnie, do you know when they expect to have the next school? Did they push that out? I believe maybe a high school. Have they said when their next, they're expecting their next school to be built?
No, that wasn't included in their last CIP, and I haven't heard anything more about that.
Okay.
One note just to make is that the buses, technology upgrades and all, though this is bond money, the bonds are synced up with the life of the item. So we don't take out 20- or 30-year bonds on five-year buses.
No, we do not.
Nor computers.
Right. We take out on computers and technology replacements, a seven-year average life cycle. On fire trucks and buses, it's 12-year life cycle. And then for buildings and major capital maintenance, it's 20 years.
Thank you. Any questions?
Utilities has a number of different types of projects, general projects, water projects, and sewer projects. I think because this, their projects encompass a number of slides here, I'll just go through slide by slide and ask if you have any questions on the projects on that slide. Moving on to the next one. And this is the final slide of utilities projects. So in terms of the next steps on the CIP, we are scheduled to have another CIP work session on November 12th. And once I reach the end of this slide, I'd like to get your feedback on whether or not you feel like that's necessary, you want to move forward with that. On November 16th, we expect to receive the superintendent's recommended CIP. And actually, that's when that will be presented to the school board. Then the staff at the school board office will send to finance staff on November 17th that information. The school board then adopts its CIP on November 23rd, and the board of supervisors is scheduled on November 24th to adopt the final fiscal year 17, fiscal year 2021 CIP. So in terms of, obviously, we have a couple, just a few questions to get you responses back on from tonight. But what about November 12th? Is that something you feel like is necessary, another CIP work session? No, ma'am, not that I'm aware of.
I would say from our side, I don't see the need for one.
All right, thank you. That's it for my, my presentation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, moving along.
Moving along, Mr. Chairman. Now we are at item seven, the return of the proffer guidelines, and Wanda Parish is here.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're here this evening to discuss the, the proffer guidelines that were adopted at the last meeting. As I understand it, the board wanted to give the proffer advisory committee an opportunity to comment on the debt service credit. And so with me this evening, we have Mike Jones, who served on the proffer advisory committee, and Robert Stubber, who is the chairman of the planning commission and also served on the proffer advisory committee. I didn't prepare any sort of formal presentation. I was under the impression that this would be more of a question-answer discussion session.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, I guess one of the questions I have is that, you know, we talk about a formula, how the proffer guidelines and how the debt service and everything was, was brought up, the debt service credit. And I think one of the things we asked for last time, or at least, is we've never seen what the formula is. I mean, when you say you come up with this, the formula for the debt service, and, I mean, we've seen the guidelines, and when you say the formula is for how much goes to schools and how much goes to that. But we talk about a formula. So are we, am I misguided in the fact that there's something not out there that we've already seen, and we just don't know how to interpret it?
The very first presentation to the board, that I believe was in February of this year, included a detailed walkthrough of each of the methodologies for each of the public facilities, including the debt service, and kind of went through step by step where we got our numbers from, what the methodology was. So that is included in your board packet as the PowerPoint presentation from, I believe it's February. So that was in there as well as in the appendix, I believe it's appendix C of the proffer guidelines. It includes a description of the methodology for each of the facilities.
Other questions? I think that one of the questions that people had had was about the debt service credit and how that was brought about, what the rationale behind that was. So would either of you gentlemen like to sort of explain the, because you both served on the proffer guideline committee, of what exactly that was, where it came about, why that was included, how that would work, those types of things? Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that. The committee took on the task of reviewing the suggested proffer guidelines, and our recommendations were all based on formulas that calculate the actual impact of residential growth on the capital facilities in the county. That impact is very quantifiable. Things cost what they do. It's not, proffers, these proffers are not arbitrary, and we don't believe they should be political. So the committee did not concern itself with the final dollar amount of proffers. We simply worked to make sure that our proffers or the formulas that were used were, were accurate and reflected the true impact of growth. And the debt service credit is an important part of that calculation. The argument for not including debt service credit hinges on the question of whether or not existing debt service should be considered a community cost. While we agree that there are legitimate community costs, existing debt service should not be considered one of them, and I'll try to explain why. As the number of residents in the county increases, it eventually becomes necessary to build new facilities like fire stations, schools, libraries, to support those new residents. But as you know, not every new home is built on a lot that has paid proffers. New homes built on buy-right lots pay no proffers towards these additional county facilities that are needed from the residents that live on these buy-right lots. And so when it's time to build new facilities, the county takes the money it's collected in proffers and applies it to the cost of building the new capital improvements. But since some of those new homes built on buy-right lots did not pay proffers, there's not enough money to build the entire facility that the county has to, and the county has to borrow the rest of the money needed to construct the facility. That money, that borrowed money is then repaid through tax revenue. The committee discussed that concept of community cost, and they agreed that it was valid because it relates to future buy-right growth, and everyone, including new homes that have paid proffers, should participate in paying that cost. However, when you classify existing debt as community cost, you go beyond asking new development to pay its own way. Now bear in mind that when we say existing debt, we're only referring to the debt on capital improvements to which proffers are applied, like schools or libraries or fire stations. It is, we're not referring to the totality of debt incurred by the county. The reason it is wrong to consider existing debt as community cost is this. When a school was built in the past, it was built to serve existing residents. Those residents did not pay proffers, so the county borrowed the money to build the school. Some of that borrowed money is still being paid back with tax dollars today. Since the new homeowner in a proffered house pays the same taxes, they are paying for the existing schools built to serve prior or current residents, in addition to paying cash proffers for new schools. It is important to keep in mind that the new homeowner will also be paying an equal share of the future school built for buy-right growth. So they're effectively paying for three schools. The, the school, the one that was built for the past residents to serve the folks that already live here, the one that they're going to use, and also the one that has to be built to handle future buy-right growth. The reason the debt service credit is warranted is because it only relates to the debt that currently exists because of the county facilities that were built to serve the people already here, and it gives the proffered home a credit for the portion of their taxes that would be used to pay back the existing debt. A legal justification for proffers is to offset the impact of new growth, in other words, pay its own way. Proffers are not to be used as a creative mechanism to create an additional tax on new homes as a means of subsidizing the people who already reside in the county. If you didn't pay proffers, you should pay for your schools through your taxes. If you do pay proffers, then you should get a credit for the portion of your property taxes that are going to be used to pay back the debt on the school that was built for the people already living here but was not adequate to serve, to serve you. It's unreasonable to expect new homeowners to pay for an existing school in addition to their own. If proffers are to accurately and fairly offset the impact of growth from a new home, then there must be a debt service credit. To not do so is to use the proffer system to collect money that has nothing to do with offsetting the impact of new growth and everything to do with promoting an entitlement society where we're all happy to let somebody else pay our way. Proffer should be limited to the actual impact a new home has on capital facilities in the county, and tacking on existing debt, the existing debt service caused by the person who already lives here and disguising it as community cost is arbitrary, unreasonable, and unfair. It's inequitable to expect new residents to subsidize existing residents in addition to paying their own way. And please keep in mind, when proffers are arbitrarily inflated, there are consequences. Unnaturally inflated proffers increase the cost of housing because those inflated proffers get tacked onto the price of a new home. And that in turn decreases the desirability of our county to the very businesses and new jobs that we all want to attract here, because the cost of housing is a key component of quality of life and important consideration for the people making those business decisions. And so we appreciate your willingness to reexamine this issue tonight, and, and we believe that the debt service credit is an important component, ensuring that the proffer calculation is both accurate and fair. And so we would ask you to include it in the overall proffer calculation.
Thank you.
If I could add, if I could add one minor additional point. In the general concept of land use planning, one of the things we're trying to do is to encourage more development and more construction to occur in the primary settlement district and in developments where proffers are, have already been established. And by having proffers that are, to Mr. Jones's point, to have them that are more in line with realistic costs, then we are actually discouraging sprawl, and there is in effect a discouragement, discouraging of building on buy-right property, perhaps more in the rural areas where people can just go out and subdivide with family divisions and that sort of thing. So I think this is a, a good public policy in general because it would help encourage development more in the primary settlement district, as was previously noted.
Thank you. Mr. Skinner?
Mike, when you, when you talk about people who haven't paid proffers, okay, as far as I know, we've paid, we've had proffers in the county for many, many years, okay? And you talk about, you know, new people, the people that build homes today and people that move in are now going to schools that have been built a while back, okay? And as I asked a question, when's the next school going to be built for the schools? Six, seven years, maybe down the road. So these people that are moving in now are going to be using schools and fire stations or whatever we pay for proffers today, not six years down the road. So I'm not sure I understand why they would be paying three schools. They, you know, there's people who've come in here and they paid the proffers a long way. Those people have used the schools and left. New people have moved into those schools and are using those schools today. And then again, for Wanda, one quick question, how much buy-right development do we have compared to non-buy-right? You know, just what percent in this county?
The buy-right development percentage is going down over the years. We're probably at about 60% to 65% rezoned lots being developed at this point in time. But there is a fair amount of buy-right development potential still out there and buy-right subdivisions that have yet to be built out.
Okay, you say, I'm asking for what percent of our development's coming up now by right? You're saying 65%?
No, no, then...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 65% on rezoned land at this point, so. 35.
35%. Okay, about a third of it is the, roughly a third of it is by right, okay? So Mike, if you could explain to me, because I was a little confused with, the people that come in today are using the schools that we have today. And if we don't build any more schools for another six, seven years, well, no, do we wait to charge them when, you know, how do we do that?
The proffer formula, the calculations that are used, assume that that new person is going to pay for their school irrespective of the fact there may be room somewhere for them. They're still being charged the full cost of the impact for, assuming there was new school, no school available for them. That's how the formula is set up. So that is how they're being charged. So even though they use, take a space or a spot in an existing school, they've still paid the full cost of building a new school for them.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not necessarily convinced that they have, quote, "paid the full cost" because, you know, the proffers that will come in will be, say, a couple million dollars, but a new school, as we know, is going to cost us somewhere in the 20 to 30 million dollar range. So there's still a bond that's going to have to be issued to build that school. And so they, you know, would be expected to be paying for that, and that would be considered, quote unquote, a community requirement.
Yes, for any new school that's built in the future, that's correct. And that's the, the debt service credit only relates to existing debt, not to future debt.
And if there is no debt, they get no credit?
That would be correct. If, if everybody paid proffers and everything, all capital improvements were paid for with cash, then it would be a non-issue. But as...
A very confusing issue for me.
The, the cost of a school, the actual impact to a new family, a new homeowner that comes, the formula looks at what that cost, what the cost of a school is, considers how many students that school supports, and actually... students that school supports, and actually determines what the capital cost is per student.
Okay. So I think part of this is that, as Mr. Skinner said, I have not seen sort of the equation. So some of this is a little, I don't know.
Mr. Champy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The example you used was a school and paying for three schools, which are kind of standalone, single facility items. I guess I don't know how the portion of proffers for something like transportation or water and sewer are calculated, but what I'm wondering, if the proffer pays to get you, to get the homeowners from the highway to their home, or maybe pays for an extra lane on the highway, but the highway already exists and the county presumably has debt from having built that highway, and those new homeowners are going to be using it. And same with water and sewer. If the proffers are paying to get the water and sewer to their homes, but it's already been built up to the property line presumably, and the county has debt from that, so that's the part of the debt service credit. I'm not sure.
First of all, water and sewer are not a part of the proffer system. So any debt related to water and sewer would not be part of the calculation. It only relates to the items for which you can charge proffers, the six categories that I think are outlined in the guidelines. So that's all we're talking about. So it's only debt on those areas that comes into play.
Just a quick one. Why are proffers not charged on utilities, infrastructure? Is that a law, or is that...
That's correct. Because they're an enterprise fund, they have fees that are paid to cover their costs, so they're not part of the proffer system.
I guess that kind of goes back to, so are taxes in a way. The taxes that the homeowner pays pay the debt on the previous debt service, technically, right? I guess I understand both sides of the argument, so I, and I do understand, if you didn't rezone the properties, you may not need the additional infrastructure. Now, that's one of the questions is, so are they paying a premium, the debt service credit, because we may potentially have to build new schools in the future or more infrastructure? So I, I get it, but I'm not sure which way you guys are going to go on this one.
Mr. Ross.
Wanda, how many buy rights? You mentioned as a percentage. What's the actual number?
The figure that I have handy right now, I did, this is about a year old at this point, but I did a calculation that since 2010, so between 2010 and 2014, 900 of 1,300 lots that had been recorded were rezoned lots. So that was about 69% of the lots. During that same time period, 44% of single-family homes that were actually built were on the rezoned lots. So that was 732 out of 1,661 single-family homes.
Do you have an estimate of how many buy rights exist in Spotsylvania County today? I think we're the ninth-largest geographic county in the state of Virginia.
There would be, there would be hundreds.
Hundreds of thousands?
Not hundreds of thousands, but there would be thousands, there would be thousands.
Have roughly an idea of what that is?
It probably would be somewhere four to 6,000.
That's it?
I'm just going off the top of my head here. We could certainly do an inquiry in GIS and tabulate that.
I have another question. So proffers are voluntary, correct?
Yes, yes, they are.
So Jim, can we, can the board demand that they pay, a builder, developer pays a cash proffer?
No.
It's not even within their guidelines for an approval?
Can't demand, can't demand cash proffers.
Thank you.
No, but we can recommend, which is what we're doing with these guidelines, guidelines for, you know...
They're recommended guidelines, but you...
But they don't have to, they don't have to be...
No, ma'am, they're just, they're just, they're recommended guidelines, they're not compulsory.
Now, impact fees would be compulsory, correct?
Yes.
So how long has Spotsylvania County been collecting proffers? Just a history?
I don't know the answer to that.
It was 2002.
At least since 2002. It may have been longer than that.
If I may add, I think it was longer than that. That may have been when the first guidelines were adopted, but, I mean, they were, people were offering proffers, you know, before that.
Well, and there was, I think there was also, we can certainly pull the history up and look at it, but there was a substantial period of time where we had the legal capacity to accept proffers, but they weren't offered typically because buy right development rights were so rich on property that there were very rarely rezonings brought forward for residential development.
Do you happen to recall what those were, the buy right?
Well, I think one of the, actually, small world, Mr. Ross, the, an issue that you've been dealing with in your district lately with historically R1 zoning property that was set to that district classification 27 years ago, was it? And I believe originally, Wanda, correct me on this if you recall, but once upon a time, I believe the R1 zoning classification enabled buy right 10,000 square foot lots.
Yes, I believe you're correct.
So with that buy right potential on property, and there were substantial areas of the county that were zoned R1 at 10,000 square foot lots by right, there was not great demand for rezoning to pursue higher density.
So that would have been the calculation for urban sprawl, right? I mean, is that correct?
Perhaps, well, yeah. We can certainly pull the history up and show the board the old, the old maps.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
One more question, Mr. Mankala. You'd mentioned earlier, I thought you said, "It's very difficult for us to deny a rezoning." Didn't you say that in the bank?
No, sir.
Did it meet all the criteria of the county?
No, sir. No, sir.
So there's no, you can deny it for any reason?
Well, no, not for any reason. You can't be arbitrary and capricious, but, you know, it's got to be based on levels of service, transportation, health, public safety, welfare, but, no, it's not.
Must have misunderstood you.
Backdriven, yeah, I believe. Yes, sir.
Mr. Champy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving away from the debt service credit for a minute, you mentioned that new home buyers shouldn't have to subsidize those who already live here, and you were talking about the debt service credit, but these new guidelines were made based on the actual cost of things. Is the reason they're lower than the old guidelines because that's what the county was doing before, is trying to make new residents pay for the services to old residents, in your opinion?
No, in my opinion, previously there was a lot of inaccuracies, and the assumptions that were being used were incorrect, and some of the cost numbers were incorrect and simply needed to be, become more accurate. And so this was a, making, what we did was look at this and I think simply made the formulas more accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Then is this something that we should look at sort of on a periodic basis to ensure that costs and other things haven't changed over time, or, I mean, this is, and what sort of periodicity would we use?
The guidelines include an annual update after the CIP and the budget are adopted. There are a number of inputs that we would then update annually and generate the new numbers for that year.
And those would include actual costs at that point?
Yes, they would include new capital construction costs, budget figures, the CIP information for transportation. So there are a host of assumptions that would need to be updated each year.
Because, for instance, right now, we don't have a school in the CIP.
Right, and the schools actually are not based on the CIP. Transportation is the only category based on the CIP. The school costs are based on the average of recent school construction in Virginia, taken from a state report.
Mike, I'm trying to understand this. You know, in the past, people have come here and we've had proffers and they've paid the proffer for schools and stuff of that nature. My concern is this: As we go through, they have not only paid the proffer, but then they pay the taxes to help maintain the schools and pay off the bonds and stuff of that nature, okay? Because we never reach, we never seem to have enough proffers or whatever in the bank that we always go out and we have bonds to build schools. Last one was Riverbend, close to $64 million worth of bonds. So my point is, if they don't pay a proffer, okay, and then we build new schools, the only way we get that money back, it seems like to me, is to, you know, if the bonds and we work out what we need to pay off our debt every year to be, you know, stuff of that nature, like we have to, it seems like we'd be raising taxes extremely high there to make up that difference, what we need when new schools are built and stuff of that nature. I mean, I guess what I don't understand is that in the past, we've had people pay proffers, we've built schools, and that one time they paid upfront, helps build those schools, and then there are taxes. If we don't take, if we don't, if we give that credit out, that is money that we're losing every year to go towards schools. So when we need to build a school, because right now, the people that are coming in are going to be using the current schools, there's no plans to build any more schools. We might have to realign and stuff of that nature, okay? And that is a, that is a piece that the county has to pay for every year, is the bonds on the schools.
Right. Right now, probably, if you did the math, I think probably less than 1% of the homes have paid proffers in the county, so...
What do you mean by that, Mike? I don't understand that. I really don't. 1% have paid proffers?
I think the total amount of proffers that's been collected over the last, in 2002, there was a downzoning, and that's, that downzoning then forced developers to begin to rezone their properties, because prior to that, there was so much buy right zoning that rezonings were not required. It was just, in effect, virtually never happened. But since that time, with the recession, a decade long, is it around $10 million that's been collected in proffers? And if you, we've looked at the numbers, and if you take that and you assumed an average proffer of $25,000...
Thirty.
It, the numbers come out, too, on average, it's like 400 houses in the county have paid proffers. This is still relatively new. Mostly, what is currently here is from the past, from residents that have not paid proffers, therefore we borrowed money. If every homeowner paid a proffer, you would never borrow any money. It would not be necessary because you would have paid for all the facilities. So the only reason we're borrowing any money is because somebody didn't pay a proffer.
A reduced proffer. I mean, the last, last six, seven applications, we have reduced the proffers so that it was possible for builders to make a, you know, really to do it, because at the current proffers, what we had before we reduced them, it was just really not realistic that a developer could come in and build homes and then still make money, make worth that, was my understanding.
I think that was part of it, coupled with the idea that, long-term, they were generating tax revenue that would offset some of the proffers that would have otherwise been generated.
I would say this is information that's fairly new to me. I don't know if it's from board members, but sort of catches me off-guard that many of our homes have not been paid any proffers.
Just, again, for my clarification on some of this, in the CIP, though we haven't seen the school board CIP specifically, there's money for technology and other things, for which we will be issuing bonds. The students that would come in, in these new houses, would be going to the schools and utilizing this. Would that money be part of the tax credit? Or is there some way to say, you know, this is money to build a new school versus this is money for things that all students will be using? And, you know, and it may be that having some new students in the school is also factored in in terms of what they have, you know, what additional stuff they have to buy and that sort of thing. So, to me, even though it's an existing bond with interest that's being paid, that they would be benefiting from it as well and therefore should, and somewhat driving the cost because some of it's driven by new students, am I making, so how would that be dealt with, or is that not included in the current calculation?
It's not included in that credit because it's not for capital improvement. The $60 million that's in the current CIP for school-related expenses is for renovations, remodeling, and I believe there's one expansion that was mentioned at Cortland High School, but those, that's not included in the credit.
Okay, so, okay.
I wanted to chime in on the debt service credit item, particular to your question, Ms. Heideg. On the debt service credit calculation, what we did was, we went back and looked at all the existing debt service of the county, whether it was capacity-driven, or whether it was a bus replacement, or whether it was the maintenance of the schools, the major maintenance, all of the existing debt service is included in that credit, all of it.
Couple of issues here. Sometimes when you're chairman, you don't chime in, you just referee. So if I'm covering ground that already, I'd like to bring us back around to sort of what the discussion has kind of been about. One of the things, I do think that that number is off, the 400 homes, because Lee's Park, whether, though it wasn't a cash proffer, they did build a road that the county accepted for $30 million roughly. So, and I do believe that they have about 1,200 homes that are completed in there. So at the very least, we do have Lee's Park. I do think Lee's Park was one of the first large rezonings that actually had proffers tied to them. And so I think that proffers, though, might be a concept that go back a while in its current form, and newest generation, I think, started at that point. So I think it's, to try to compare that to things beforehand, and did we have a guideline? Did we not? I don't know how much traction and real information we're going to be getting out of that. Wanda, I think you had said something that our transportation proffer is only based on our CIP?
The transportation proffer is the only one that's based on the CIP. All of the others have a different methodology, but the transportation proffer is pulled from projects within our adopted CIP plus improvements estimated for exit 126 and 118.
So that means that new folks that are coming here are only paying on the projects that we can afford to actually pay on as part of their proffer? It doesn't mean that the overall plan that we need to actually move traffic, they're paying a portion of that whatsoever?
Yes, it is purely based on the CIP plus those additional... Yes, it is purely based on the CIP plus those additional large projects that benefit the entire county.
Right, because I know FAMPO had done it several years ago, looking at all the projects that are necessary to move traffic in the region, and it was an astronomical number that we will never be able to collect through proffers or an adequate tax rate. The, no, there was another item brought up about impact fees, and so far, our legislation that we have is only, allows us to collect impact fees on or for transportation, and only in areas that we have set up impact fee area, okay. Could we set up one for the entire county? Or would have to be corridor-specific?
One could be set up for the entire county. There was a change, when the impact fee legislation first was introduced and people started to use it, the thought was that you had to have separate discreet impact fee districts. But that has changed, and now you're able to do a county-wide one.
Because that would be interesting to see if there is this byright, and by, and when you said that the growth that was from byright, was that byright from the beginning of the zoning ordinance, or was that from a specific date that they were that?
Yeah, I was just looking at 2010 until 2014.
Right, but the ones that are classified as byright, they weren't previously rezoned?
That's correct. They, they were, I put them in two completely separate categories, either they went through a rezoning, or they never went through a rezoning.
At any point, they went through a rezoning?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Because an impact fee that would be county-wide, would that then take the place, place of proffers? Or do proffers still, could they still be voluntarily offered? And I'm looking at my county attorney. If, if we were to put impact fees on the entire county, would that negate?
Transportation.
Yes, impact fees for transportation.
And there would be a credit if there weren't any proffers against the transportation impact fees.
So there would be a credit?
Would be, I believe.
Okay, so we wouldn't be double, double-dipping?
Right.
With a rezoning?
I mean, I'd like to, to, obviously, double-check, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that's the case, yes, sir.
Okay. And then getting to the debt service only on schools, I think that we have, I have questions about it, especially when we do the calculations, and, and I, I hear what you say, that folks that move in, that are paying for a new school, but yet using an old school, are paying for that debt, and though, we're still taking their proffer and applying it to a new school at whatever point that comes in. The question I have then is, we do have a calculation for schoolkids and, per household, of 2.7, two adults and a 7/10 of a child. So there are houses that don't actually have any kids when they move in here. So to, to take that argument to the next step, there are many houses that don't, that do pay proffers that don't actually use them, or you might have a situation with an older neighborhood that might have paid the debt service on a previous school in that school district, let's say, and those kids grow and they move out, and then you have a new family that comes in, and those kids are now using the school. So their taxes are paying for the debt service on the new school or the old school, because it's community debt. Is that kind of what, what is trying to be said?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm, it's, yeah, I'm trying to, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand both sides of the argument, to understand exactly where we're coming from. I know finances weighed in on it, and I know the proffer committee did, and they took a lot of time to go through it, and I don't want to simply dismiss it. I, I do want to look at it and, and come to a conclusion, but I do, I do think that it, after 10 o'clock at night, nothing is going to be finalized this evening. So I, I would say, at least from my own point of view, that I would like to continue this at, at another work session, perhaps when we are a little bit fresher. And then that way, we can discuss it further, and also get any comments back from this evening of what has been said back and forth, to maybe try to clear up what the, what, what the discussion has been about. If there's any objection from the board? Okay. And again, thank you for your patience this evening and, and sticking it out.
Mr. Mankala, another closed session, or two?
Yes, sir, this would be your resolution to adjourn in a closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for discussion concerning prospective businesses or industries or the expansion of existing businesses or industries, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, specifically to manufacturing and/or distribution facilities and a technology company, and whereas the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors desires to adjourn in a closed meeting for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters, regarding the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically discussion concerning BZA appeals A150001 and A150002, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.23711A5 and 7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So moved. Discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
...certification by this board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County Board of Supervisors hereby returns to open meeting and certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in a motion to convene in a closed meeting where heard discussed or considered in a closed meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Trampy.
Aye.
Mr. Sebilla.
Aye.
Ms. Heideg.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? Just one bit of discussion, just remember that the next board meeting will be a Thursday, the November 12th at 3:00 PM.
And I remind you, I will not be here for the afternoon.
Okay. Motion? Please vote.
So...